All right, welcome, everybody. So we are going to actually first call, call to order the public hearing on driver education waivers. It is now six o'clock. For everyone in the audience, just so you know, we will follow with our regularly scheduled board meeting, but we're going to go ahead and take care of this first. Ginny, take the role.
Collins.
Here.
Coyle.
Here.
Iker.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Owen. Patrice.
Here.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here. And just so everyone knows, we will do the pledge of allegiance in our regular board meeting. And so with that, let's go ahead and start with stating the purpose of the hearing, and I'll pass it over to Dr. Mesmer.
So the purpose of the meeting tonight, we have two waivers we're requesting from the state. The first is to allow us to utilize 12 simulator hours in lieu of three hours of the six required hours for behind-the-wheel instruction. This enables us to provide full in-house behind-the-wheel instruction with our own staff. And so this waiver allows us to do that. The second is a request to modify the Illinois School Code to allow the district to charge up to $500 to individual students to participate in the driver's education program. Currently, the per pupil cost is $1,942.33, and Mary, I believe our current fee for driver's education is $350.
All right, thank you. And if we could do the report on publishing of legal notices?
So they were published as requested and required by law. They've been in the Daily Herald for two weeks. And we'll be open then to any public comments if that may be generated.
All right, thank you so much. So we now open it up for discussion and public comments. I do just want to let everyone know that at the time, citizens who are present are invited to ask direct questions or make statements to the members of the Board of Ed and Administrators, but it is directly about the driver's education waivers in this meeting. So at this point, I'll open it up. All right, if there aren't any questions or statements, but can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right, so it is 6:02. Let's go ahead and call to order our regular Board of Education. If you could stand as you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. If we could take the role.
Collins.
Here.
Coyle.
Here.
Iker.
Here.
Lee.
Aye.
Owen. Patrice.
Here.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here, thank you. We'll move on to 207's Best, definitely our favorite part of the evening. This month's award is extracurricular activities. And if we could start with Main East.
All right, Megan, do you want to come and take your place right next to Dr. Collins? Main East High School is pleased to recognize Megan Espinoza as one of 207's Best in the area of extracurricular involvement. Megan is one of those rare students that has a notable impact on everyone close to her, including her coaches and sponsors. Balancing extracurriculars as a dedicated athlete and student is difficult, but Megan does this with ease. She qualified for the IHSA State Girls Gymnastics Meet this year. She's a two-time CSL All-Conference selection and has maintained a GPA over 4.0 throughout high school. Megan has also been awarded the CSL Sportsmanship Award and the Betsy Exelson McGowan Award for her commitment and success in the sport. Megan is respected by her peers, her teachers, and the Main East coaching staff. She is an excellent representation of what a Main East student-athlete should aspire to be. When talking to Megan about her success in the gym and in the classroom, I was most impressed with how she relates her experiences in gymnastics to her overall well-being. Megan shared with me that the greatest impact gymnastics has had on her is her confidence. She appreciates that learning new skills forces her out of her comfort zone. Challenges in gymnastics have guided Megan to find adaptive solutions and to persevere. She loves the satisfaction she feels from accomplishing new goals. Megan defines the bars as her favorite event because that's where she's shown the most growth throughout high school. The many accolades Megan earned through gymnastics are just a portion of her success in extracurricular activities at Main East. Over her four years, she has participated in East Pals, swimming and diving, junior leaders, athletic training, marching band, senior leaders, and National Honor Society. The leadership and sportsmanship Megan demonstrates extends through everything she does. Mrs. Darenberg shared that "it's been a joy and a privilege to teach Megan in AP Psychology this school year. She is a natural leader that is able to make everyone feel welcome and comfortable. She will go out of her way to catch people up in her group and make sure that everyone understands. She's also driven to succeed. She wants to do her best and be her best. While she takes school seriously, she's always up for telling a joke to keep class fun and to keep me on my toes. Megan is one of a kind, and I cannot wait to see what the next chapter of her life brings." Mr. Beckwith shared that "it's been a pleasure to teach Megan in band these last four years. I watched her grow into a confident leader with a joyful and friendly personality. She's been able to balance her commitment to band, her athletic prowess, and her high achievement in the classroom. She matches her intensity on the gymnastics floor in all of these activities and does so with a high degree of success." Ms. Ruzuko shared that "I've had the pleasure of working with Megan this year as a senior leader for one of my PE freshman classes. She's a great representative of our PE Leaders Program. Megan has demonstrated to me a confidence in herself that not only comes from her maturity, but also her drive to succeed in all she does." Ms. Lucci shared that "Megan has been demonstrating determination and leadership from her freshman year. Every meet, each gymnast has a Megan Talk in the corner where she motivates them to do their best and believe in themselves. Her determination shows when she begs coach and the athletic trainers for an extra hour of practice every Saturday so she can improve her skills. She never quits." Ms. Jezwejak shared that "we're very fortunate to have Megan as a leader of NHS. She has an outgoing and effervescent personality that allows her to connect with the other leaders and builds relationships with the members during meetings. She's dependable, reliable, hardworking, and we have no doubt that she's going to do amazing things in college and in her career after. Megan's experience in gymnastics, leadership, and her own personal growth have contributed to her interest in sports psychology. She hopes to pursue a career in this area so that she can help other athletes develop themselves. Megan will surely be missed by many when she moves on to bigger and better things next year." Megan, do you want to share with us who you have with you tonight?
Tonight, I have my mom, my dad, a good friend, Ryan, and my coach, Dan.
Nice. Oh, nice that your coach is here, too. Megan, tell us about your future plans. What's in mind for you?
It's not set in stone, but I will be attending the University of Illinois, going to psychology, and then I hope to, after I graduate, go more towards the sports aspect of it.
Great, thanks so much, Megan. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Megan. So let's go ahead and move to Main South.
All right, Main South is pleased to welcome Bart Kubis tonight for 207's Best in Extracurricular Activity. Bart has been a varsity swimmer his entire high school career. He mostly swims freestyle, and this year, well, excuse me, last year added the breaststroke. He holds records at the school in the 200 medley relay, the 200 free relay, and 100 breaststroke. And he qualified for state and made it to finals in the 200 medley relay and finished third. The 200 freestyle relay also made it to state finals and placed 12th. In the 100 breaststroke, Bart made it to the finals and finished ninth. So pretty much every race that he's in, he's going into state finals. He has also qualified for finals in the 400 freestyle. So these accolades make him an all-state swimmer. And as a whole, the boys' swim team had their best finish in school history, placing fifth at the state meet. And that's not all. Bart is also a member of the school band and the drum line, my favorite section. He was a center snare for the drum line, which makes him a section leader. In August, he also was able to play with the Chicago Symphony Orchestra when they were at Ravinia, and they played the 1812 overture, and Bart got to play the canon part. So a few remarks about Bart from his teachers. So David Hutter, Bart's band director and percussion teacher, says that "even though he has been recognized by other teachers as an outstanding student in a variety of different subjects, he is not one that wants the spotlight. Bart is a servant leader. He truly cares about others and wants to help them become the best person they can be. He is the tide that raises all ships. I am so thankful to have had him in our band team. He is also a young man of high character and strong moral values. I can trust Bart to work with any age or ability and know that everyone involved will have a positive experience and complete the goal." During parent-teacher conferences this year, multiple underclassmen' parents stated how much their sons and daughters looked up to Bart due to his musical talents and his ability to lead others. I told parents they couldn't have picked a better role model at our school. Any university or future company that will employ Bart will greatly benefit from his leadership ability, contagious spirit, and drive to be excellent." Bart's counselor, Stephanie Maximew, says "one of the things that impresses me the most about Bart is his ability and willingness to combine a rigorous academic schedule with an equally rigorous extracurricular schedule. Outside of school, Bart devotes several hours per week to swimming. From his dedication to the sport, he has gained many skills that carry over into other areas of life. His time management skills are solid, and he has become adept in managing the demands that are placed on him academically and athletically. In addition to swimming for our high school, Bart swims year-round for a club team and is a member of the water polo team as well. Bart is a competitor, but he is also a leader, too. His position as team captain for both the swim team and water polo team further honed his leadership skills and enhanced his abilities to work with others, no matter the setting, in addition to building deep and lasting friendships. Bart is passionate about music. Over the past four years, the marching band and concert bands have benefited from his unyielding commitment to his art. Furthermore, he is the section leader for the marching band and is a center snare for the band as well." Don Curra, Bart's economics teacher and the coach of our swim program, said "Bart was a captain for the boys' swim and dive team this year and excelled in that leadership position. I also had Bart in economics class during the first semester. Bart demonstrates tremendous work ethic, determination, and a willingness to hold others accountable in both the classroom and athletics. These qualities make him an accessible, exceptional student in class, an outstanding leader and performer in the pool." And finally, Terrelln Keith, Bart's AP Music Theory teacher, says "I've known Bart for four years through our band program, and this year I was fortunate to have him in my AP Music Theory class. It has been sheer joy having him as a student. Bart is one of those students who has had great energy about him as soon as he walks into a room. He is intelligent, friendly, polite, and skilled in academics, fine arts, athletics, and activities. He treats everyone with the utmost respect and kindness, produces high-quality work, and executes skills beautifully. Bart is a role model for others. He is a quiet leader that students look up to and is the epitome of hawk pride at Main South. I'm thrilled he is being recognized tonight." So Bart, what are your future plans post-high school?
It's also not set in stone, but obviously I'm going to attend the university. Don't know yet. I'm thinking between Nebraska or John Carver University. They're all, it's either marching band or swimming.
Marching band.
I'm still deciding for this last month.
And what do you want to study when you're?
I'll be studying political science, which I want to go into law and pursue a career as a lawyer.
Cool, and who's here with you tonight?
I have my dad and my sister.
Awesome, congratulations.
Awesome, congratulations, Bart. All right, let's move to Main West.
Carlos, you're up. I'm really excited to present Carlos. Carlos is such a big part of our culture at Main West, and we kicked off Cultural Celebration Week this week, so all ties together. The reason we value our extracurriculars in high schools is because they expand the ways in which students and staff can come together and create a sense of belonging and community that's unique to us. And that sense of belonging and community is our culture. And while every school has one, the culture of each school is unique because of the things that we create and share together. These come from the students, the families, the communities we serve, and I can think of no better representative of what is best about Main West culture than Carlos. "When Carlos was a freshman, he held back. I didn't want to go at it that hard," he told me. He did cross-country and track, but he didn't seek out other teams or clubs apart from running. Something made him say to himself, however, "I could be doing something more." So once he did, he discovered opportunities to branch out, to build connections with people he wouldn't know otherwise. In other words, he became a part of Main West culture, and he's been shaping it with his enthusiasm, energy, and kindness ever since. So as a sophomore, first came DECA and mock trial, where he was a state finalist in DECA and learned in mock trial that he has to get out there, speak in public, connect with people, and not hang back in the shadows. This year in mock trial, he has twice been named Outstanding Witness. That's the highest honor for that role in mock trial competitions, and he qualified for the state tournament. Sophomore year, he also joined Warrior Strings, for which he plays the violin, and began to take photos and write for The Westerner. He committed himself to community service in Key Club, performed in V show and a musical, became an anchor on Warrior Weekly, and ultimately would take part in the Ascend Scholar Leader Program, Model UN, U Alpha Theta, the National English Honor Society, Pi Sigma Pi, Scholastic Bowl, the Principal's Leadership Team, National Honor Society, TriAM Link Crew, and the Science and National Honor Society and Spanish National Honor Society, both of which he's the president. He continues to compete in cross-country and track, where he has formed his best Main West memories with current teammates and returning alumni at IHOP after meets, laughing and sharing stories. He became a part of the culture he now shapes, and soon he will be the one returning to IHOP to stay connected with that culture. When I asked Carlos, "What should I make the board aware of? What should I make sure that the board and the audience know about him?" He immediately responded, "My devotion to my culture, my family's stories." At Main West and certainly beyond, Carlos has been able to embrace his language and his identity, cultivating a love of reading in Spanish and connecting his studies to his strong intergenerational home life. On his dad's side, his family speaks an indigenous language in their village in Mexico, while his mom's family creates his home here with his grandparents, mother, aunt, cousin, and sister. His father was deported when Carlos was four, and he and his family anxiously await the results of a hearing in Mexico next week in which his father's opportunity to come back hangs in the balance. His family's story means a great deal to Carlos as their experiences in resilience have shaped him, and so he has shaped us. Carlos's impact on our staff has been wonderful." Mr. Hasman, track and cross-country coach and advisor of the Ascend Scholar Leader Program, has known Carlos for four years. "For every year that I have known Carlos Hernandez, he has relentlessly pursued any and every possible opportunity to challenge himself, contribute to the community of this school, and sharpen the skills that he knows he will need as he pursues his love of the Spanish language and his business prowess, specifically in the field of marketing. I'm in a rare blessed position to have watched Carlos grow. As an introverted freshman, Carlos demonstrated extraordinary classroom effort. This opened many doors. Carlos sieged each opportunity by taking non-accelerated and AP courses each year. His work ethic earned him the classroom success that he continues to attain today. This effort, along with his willingness to work with others, has made him a highly sought-after leader. Carlos was handpicked for the Principal's Leadership Team, the Ascend Scholar Leader Program, and Link Crew, our student-led volunteer mentor corps. I do not know of another student that treats his peers and the adults at Main West with greater kindness. The sponsors of these aforementioned groups, as well as the sponsors of DECA and mock trial, his coaches, his musical directors, and I have a tremendous respect for Carlos because of how he treats others. Carlos is a true role model for his younger peers. I fear the day Carlos graduates, May 21st, so you better start it. His contribution to Main West High School will leave a vacuum. He is simply irreplaceable." Mr. Sumida calls Carlos "a force of nature. As Science National Honor Society President, he is always prepared for meetings, brimming with good ideas to help students help themselves and one another. He always gives his all and makes members of our club feel important, which is vital to our success." Mr. Galanes, who has guided Carlos in his study of Spanish, considers him "one of my class leaders due to his academic achievement, engagement in class activities, and his participation. He is intrinsically motivated, has an innate desire for learning, and excels in and out of the classroom. As a person, Carlos is a friendly and optimistic person who is respected by his peers and teachers alike. It has been an honor to have Carlos in my classes today." Mrs. Romer describes Carlos as "quiet, awesome. He is focused in the moment on learning and on success. It is a recipe that has proven successful for him. Not only was he a rock star in First Period A Push last year and Model UN, but also a state qualifier for National History Day with his exhibit on the reversal of the Chicago River, and he always dresses the part." She included a picture, but I don't. Finally, Mrs. Mazanowski shared Carlos's contributions to DECA over the last three years. Carlos has been a DECA member since his sophomore year, the year the pandemic caused all competitions to be held virtually. Carlos did not let that fact deter him, and he ended up being a top-10 finalist in the state in the Principles of Marketing event. Since then, Carlos's other activities and commitments have prevented him from competing, but he still took on a leadership role by serving as the Main West DECA Chapter I Connect Coordinator. This means that Carlos tracked all of our organization's activities throughout the year and communicated them to the state officers. Carlos's efforts earned Main West DECA Bronze Status and recognition at the state competition for the past two years. I am grateful to Carlos for his hard work on behalf of our DECA chapter. So for all of these contributions and the way you make us who we are and make us better versions of who we are, thank you, Carlos. Carlos, who are you going to be with me tonight?
It's my mother and my sister standing right there.
Great, and can you share your future plans?
So I got a full ride to the University of Illinois, so I'll probably be good time to be there. So I'm going to be a Spanish major.
Congratulations, Carlos, and thank you to all of our students for representing D207 and being our best. At this time, we invite you to go in the hallway, take pictures with your principal, celebrate the moment. You're always welcome to come back if you would like, but we understand if that's your night for you. So thank you again. So we'll give you a moment. All right, so this is actually the time for public comment. If you have not submitted your comment card or you have a comment card, we can grab them now. I do just, so this is actually on your comment card as well, but I do just want to make a quick announcement. So all our remarks shall be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific member or members or to any person who is not a member of the board. All comments will be limited to three minutes. During public comments, the board and administration will listen to the comments but will not respond to questions. If questions are posed, an administrator will follow up with the individual if they include either their phone number or email address, which we have here, as part of signing up to speak to the board. All right, so thank you, everyone, for being here.
Any other cards?
Any other cards? All right, if not, I'd like to call up Austin Batista. Yes, please.
Good evening. I'm Austin Batista, I'm the head wrestling coach at Main East. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the board members for their consideration and their continued support for the program. We're trying to get a collaboration with Gulf Main Park District to set up a park district wrestling at Main East. And I feel that it would provide more opportunities for not only our current students, but also our middle schoolers and elementary schools. And it'd just be a really great way to, you know, influence more young lives. And, you know, again, thank you and appreciate your time.
All right, Jennifer Krupke.
All right, I'm going to try and spit all of this out in three minutes. My name is Jennifer Krupke, and I was a student at Main West High School from 2004 to 2008. For those four years, I was on comms and orcasus, all four years, varsity member, from state dance festivals to shows to representing Main West as a dancer in Paris, France. I was extremely committed. Dance was my passion, but it was also my outlet. I had a very turbulent home life growing up in my high school years, and I didn't always make the best choices. I was looking for attention at a lot of the wrong places because at the time I didn't know I was trying to fulfill a lack of attention at home. There are plenty of teachers that are still on your payroll right now that ignore the problem or wrote me off as a bad kid. Lisa Jacobs did not. Not only did she support me through a lot of troubles I had, regulating my emotions, but she helped me focus on school, my love for dance, and the positives in my life. I also remember her as being extremely fair. When I didn't show up for practices for one or another reason, I received the same punishment as someone else if they didn't show up. We lost spots in dances. She was tough on me when I needed it, but she also gave me the kindness and the support that I needed as well. To hear that Lisa Jacobs is losing her position as head of orcasus is absolutely disturbing to me. Lisa Jacobs is the heart of my program, and in my opinion, she's the heart of Main West. After hearing the supposed reason for her firing, I am even more baffled. My senior year, I was in 20 out of 28 dances. The day before the show, the last dress rehearsal, I got sick. I was throwing up everywhere. I begged her to let me stay, begged her. She made me call my mom, and she made me go to the hospital. Made me, okay. Safety has always been priority of her students. Anyone insinuating that that is not the truth, in my opinion, doesn't align with her almost 30-year track record that includes hundreds of students. In my opinion, this administration should be ashamed of themselves for not supporting a woman who has given her life to Main West High School. I am now 33 years old. I have two children. I went to college. I studied physical education, dance, and health. I've been teaching dance for over 10 years, first at various studios, and now own my own dance company. I work full-time as an early childhood educator and also work full-time for a nonprofit organization called SEAS to Childcare. I am thriving, and I truly believe I have Lisa Jacobs to thank for it. She has been the inspiration in becoming the woman I am today. I created a change.org petition just yesterday morning, and we have received over 475 signatures with many positive stories. Many positive stories about interactions with Jay throughout the years. I have printed all of these out, and I will tell you, a counter protest was started that has 19 signatures and comments that include hateful, derogatory, inflammatory statements about Lisa Jacobs. This is what we're emboldening. This is who we are empowering by not listening to the track record of this teacher. I implore you to reconsider your decision to release her from her position as head of orcasus. It would be a disservice to your students to let go of one of the best role models I have ever had the pleasure to be taught by. And I just want to leave you with this. The entire first part of this meeting was about 207's best students in extracurriculars. You would not have those students if it was not for teachers like Lisa Jacobs who dedicate themselves to the program. And I want to leave you with this as well. The last comment that was left on the page for the change.org, and I want to really pin the following, if this is how you want administration to be thought of. "Not surprising that District 207 would fail to support the very best while giving everything to the very worst." Thank you.
Thank you, any other public comment? All right, thank you. Let's go to updates from the superintendent.
Just very quickly, over the next three weeks, we've done some presentations down at our elementary districts to talk about our individual career planning and try to make connections with the elementary parents even. So we've invited everyone down to kindergarten and first grade to start attending us. And we've gotten really good traction with our elementary districts this year, probably the best we've ever had.
And then, again, any updates from board members at this time? Jin?
Okay, I have a quick report regarding, just came back from the Consortium of State School Board Association, COSPA. You know, great national conference. As we all know, we have been participating and joined the NSBA until previous year. And then now, our ISBA joined the COSPA. So this was their first year anniversary. And the theme was Leading and Learning Together. It was hosted at Tampa, Florida. And this theme is about school safety and mental health. It was a prominent topic in many of the learning sessions, as well as many others. Timely issues such as leadership and governance, student achievements, communication, collaboration, and legal issues was covered. This is their, again, first year national conference. Currently joined by 23 member states, including the state of Illinois. And they were expecting, first year expected about 1,200 people, but I think it was about 1,600-plus people participated as a first year. Business Expo compared to the NSBA, this was a very small, 35 vendors worked, participated. So it takes some time to grow. And there was about 19 to about 23 sub-sessions per day with many topics. And closing keynote remark was by TV host John Kuenz, that "What Would You Do?", that was quite interesting. It was very inspiring. And his moving presentation, he inspires all of us to believe in our own potential, the transformative power of education, and how one person can make a difference in the future of the child. That was very inspiring. And in order to end the report by, it's part of resilience, And order to end the report by inspiration caught by resilience, the ability to stay motivated, optimistic, and determined mind even in the face of a tough challenges that we are facing. One quote was, "I've missed more than 9,000 shots in my career. I've lost almost 300 games. I've failed over and over and over again in my life. And that is why I succeed." You know who said that? Michael Jordan. Yes, he said that. And then, the other, "I never lose. I either win or learn," by Nelson Mandela. So, it was very inspiring and worthwhile. The next year, 2024, this CASPA conference will be held at Dallas, Texas. And as we all know, normally it's hosted at our spring vacation, so more crowded, maybe the airfare might be expensive, you know, depends on. But next year, 2024, I do highly recommend our co-members could able to join together. Would be great. It will be in Dallas, Texas, and it will be a month earlier. So, it will be February 22nd through February 25th. So, before the spring vacation time, while we are in a freezing cold winter, it will be in Dallas, Texas. So, you will definitely learn a lot, and you will be so many wonderful superintendents, the school principals, the teachers, and everyone, and great speakers, and so on. So, highly recommend, and I hope that we could able to participate together. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jin. And thank you for going, for representing us and bringing us back good information. Any other board updates? All right. So, at the time, let's go ahead, let's get a construction update.
In your board packet is the March construction update. We continue to just work on the Maine East pool, do some punch list items, and spring break allowed us an opportunity to kind of get a head on some of the planning for the summer work. So, I would say this is kind of the slowest construction we've had in the last three and a half years. We'll take it until the summer. I'll entertain any questions that anybody has on the construction update.
Any questions?
I just had one just comment. So, I just drove through the Maine South parking lot just to kind of check things out. At what point is that little bit of fencing by the calf going to be taken away and then that?
Restoration. We believe that we'll start that this year. We're going to look to try and stage some of the stuff for the fine arts wing closer to that building, but I think they're waiting till we crystallize where we're going to stage some of that stuff so that they can take the fence down. And then, depending upon, there's peak times to plant grass seeds, early spring, late fall. So, if we miss the spring window, then we'll plant the grass seed in the fall.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mary? All right. Thank you, everybody. Let's move to monthly status of finances.
In your board packet is the February financial report. Revenue continues to be only slightly behind. You remember, it took a big jump in January as we started to see the collection of taxes. On the expenditure side, as with last month, I pointed out that the TORT fund and the transportation fund are those two funds that we are kind of watching closely. Transportation expenditures have increased greatly. This is kind of the first full year that we're back with all of our activities, so it will give us a good gauge in terms of what we should be budgeting in the future. And in the TORT fund, we switched to a January 1 renewal for insurance, so that is why that amount has peaked earlier in the year. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the February financial report.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Mary. Instructional services, anything to report?
Nobody's reported this month.
All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to other items, monthly update of our quota request.
So, we have 18 this month that either been responded to or processed and responded to.
Let's move to textbooks, 2023, 2024, first reading.
Yes. So, in your packet, you have a central science text introduction for our introduction to psychology class, Thinking of Psychology. You can see it'll be a hardback edition that we will collect and reuse each year.
Any questions? If there aren't any questions, let's go ahead and move to item E, the consent agenda. If I could get a motion on items A through G? If you could take the roll.
Collins. Coyle.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Patrice.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. Item nine is the approval of bids and awarding of contracts. If we can, should we just take them each individually?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So, could I get a motion on item A, C Power three-year contract demand response program?
This is similar to other demand response programs that we've had over the years. The program, the district can be called upon a few times a year to curtail its use of electricity in order to preserve the grid. We had our first winter curtailment this past year. It was during winter break. Most of them occur during the summer when we're able to do a lot of containment because we don't occupy the buildings fully. We get a little bit of money, but we also believe that it is in everybody's best interest to protect the electrical grid.
Is this a four-year, three-year contract?
No. We've had multiple three-year contracts. Our current one is expiring. This is a new company. Generally, it is with NRG. So, C Power is the provider that this time provided us the largest percentage share in terms of curtailment.
And how many competitive bids do we have, any participation?
We had three companies. There's, as you know, there are only a handful of companies that control the electrical market. So, there are only a handful of companies that could give us proposals on the curtailment program.
Any other questions? All right. Let's take the roll.
Patrice.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Coyle.
Hi.
Collins.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. Let's move to 9B. This is Jor LLC PE Uniform for District 207. If I could get a motion?
So, we went out for bids for two years for our PE uniforms. We've done this multiple times in the past, seeking multiple years. The lowest responsible bidder bid an alternate at Ware, Texas. That alternate was not acceptable to our filling staff as it had larger holes in the shorts and not the level of modesty that we'd like to see. The second low bidder, Jor LLC, also provided an alternate from our current PE uniform. We got samples. Those were acceptable. New this year, we added a long-sleeved shirt to the PE selection process so that if a student wanted to purchase a long-sleeved shirt, either for religious reasons or because they'd rather have a long-sleeved shirt, that is now an option. These prices actually allowed us to lower the cost of the PE shorts. They are out of Brooklyn, New York. They ship samples that the schools have reviewed, both not only for the quality of the clothing themselves, but also for the print quality.
This is so hard to find, like, uniforms. This is so hard to find the companies in the state of Illinois or neighbors.
Well, Ambassador is in the state of Illinois, but however, as you're aware, by law, we cannot give favorable treatment to a vendor. Low bid is low bid, and this low bidder just happens to be out of the state of New York.
The delivery charges, freight charges.
Everything's included, and it will be shipped directly to the schools.
Any other questions? And thank you for the consideration of options for students. All right. Let's move to 9C. This is, oh, sorry. I want going to go. Let's take the roll.
Coyle.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Patrice.
Hi.
Collins.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. So, now, I'll move to 9C. This is the music filing system, musical storage systems. Can I get a motion?
So, as you're aware, Maine South wanted to have both instrument and band storage. We had architects design the solution as we felt that it would be cheaper and more customizable than the off-the-shelf product. We received three bids. The low bidder is Music Filing Solutions. They are of Naperville, and they came in about $65,000. Last month, you may have been aware that we approved capital outlay. All of the $25,000 for next year's capital outlay will be used for this at Maintenance South. It will be installed this summer as part of construction. We allowed an allowance because they have to do some customized headers and filler spaces once we have the final certain heights after the construction.
Is it going to be in the, that's a question, is it in the hallway where we had originally talked about?
Correct. It is in the hallway in the music wing. We're going to have to move some of the stuff that we had planned on the hallway into an existing room, but we've coordinated that with both the department.
Yeah. So, music filing is significantly lower than the other two.
They have been fully scope review because that's the first thing that we noticed, was the vast difference in price. So, they spent two days scope reviewing on, they have the entire scope of the project, so they just bid a different solution and feel that they're passing on some of their favorable pricing to us.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Let's take the roll.
Collins.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Coyle.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Patrice.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. Let's move to 9D. This is Richard Artisana Cloud-based version of Infinite Campus. Can I get a motion?
So, this contract, we've been working on moving more of our systems to a cloud-based system, which gives us server capacity and also creates an easier failover system for when there's any issues with any of our Infinite Campus system. So, that's the student information system we use. During that process, we have been using a consultant. We'd like to continue to use that consultant. We've just been using this individual who's reached an amount that now requires board approval to help us move that data to the cloud.
Thank you. Questions? If there aren't any questions, let's take the roll.
Patrice.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Coyle.
Hi.
Collins.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. 9E is Elite Fiber Optics Emergency Wide Area Network Fiber Repair for Maine West. Can I get a motion?
So, move.
So, as you are aware, the fiber line that fed Maine West was severed because we cannot wait. We deem this an emergency repair so that we can continue to teach. It requires, school code allows us to do an emergency repair and waive the bidding threshold. This will repair within excess of the $25,000 bid threshold. That then, contract must be ratified with a three-fourth majority of the board vote. We have since made the repair. We will be seeking reimbursement for the damages from the contractor that severed the line and are working with the city of disciplines to ensure that we've got all of that information as well as our risk manager.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
This was the cost of the phone and internet outage?
This was the cause of the phone and internet outage.
So, it was an outside contractor?
It was an outside contractor, not on our proper.
Okay.
They did not do the proper markings by calling Julie and therefore unaware that the line was there and severed it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Let's go ahead and take the roll.
Lee.
Hi.
Coyle.
Hi.
Patrice.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Collins.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. Let's move to number 10, school fees, 2023, 2024. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you.
So, we, Sean and I have reviewed this information. We are recommending no increase in the $250 school resource fee. The only changes you'll see are the lowering of the PE shorts, the introduction of the long-sleeved shirt. The advanced placement test, AP test, have been increasing, so we're looking to bump that from $96 to $100. And then, a $2 increase on the activity ticket because, which is still a bargain. I think it's $5 to go to an individual event. So, if you go to three, you've more than paid for your activity ticket. And the only other thing we did is we removed the guitar rental, and that will be within the $250 fee because you need a guitarist to take guitar. So, we felt that that was more of a required fee than an optional fee.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
How is that chrome book usage after the students bought it? And any lost, interest covers or damages? Or are they happy with the chrome book usage?
We've been using them for over a decade. They've gotten better. I mean, the first iteration of them, the 1.0 version, we had a much higher failure rate, and they're just much more high-quality today than they've ever been. So, I don't know, Sean, if you, let's put it this way, anecdotally, they last. And in fact, a lot of our seniors turned, dominated back in, they still work. So, they have stood the test of time, I think.
Yeah. I would not really have anything to add. Our students use them. Whether or not they like them, it is the tool that we use. I'm sure there's fancier versions that folks have, but for the price point and what we can provide, it does the job. In terms of lossage, they're not, you don't really get them stolen. You do have some breakage, some students lose things, but they can recover that through the, either they have their own insurance that they can have it covered under or use it, go to the Chrome Depot and reach into the buildings and get replacements.
And the financial affordability, roughly percentages is our students in the community who's been receiving this as a?
Well, varies by building.
Yeah. It varies by building. We have about 30% on a fee waiver, add West about 40%. And I think what makes us unique and what we noted in here is most school districts, if you qualify for reduced lunch, you receive a 25% discount on your school fees, where the 207 waives those fees completely to provide some additional financial support for our finance.
And these fees are historically low. I know we've got some board members, but it was not that long ago. Like, if you had a student that had multiple AP courses, your students, an individual student's fee could easily be $600 or $700. And so, these are historically low.
Well, thank you for keeping these fees consistent and also, you know, supporting our students that qualify for the waiver. Let's go ahead and take the roll.
Lee.
Hi.
Coyle.
Hi.
Patrice.
Hi.
Collins.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. Let's move to number 11. This is the intergovernmental agreement data sharing, District 63. Can I get a motion?
This intergovernmental agreement is similar to the one that we passed last month with Henory School District 79. This enables us to share data with our partner district of District 63, particularly around student grades, needs, transcript information.
Any questions on this? And just, and this is not you?
No.
This is something we've been doing. Okay. If there aren't any questions, let's go ahead and take the roll.
Patrice.
Hi.
Liker.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Coyle.
Hi.
Collins.
Hi.
Yusuf Abramsen.
Hi.
All right. Item number 12. This is summer hours for special education and ESL department chairs. Can I get a motion, please?
So, move.
Thank you.
Okay. So, each year, we do ask for up to 20 hours for our five special education department chairs and our three EL department chairs. And this is really to help with students that transfer in over the summer. For EL, we'll be doing access testing, and then in special education, it's reviewing IEPs and assisting to meet with the families in order to determine placements and services and supports.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
I know we've been facing a great concern about the teacher shortage throughout. How's that affects to our summer having these teachers? Are we okay with that, finding a teachers, continuation of their?
So, this is for our department chairs. And so, I mean, sometimes we might do interviewing over the summer if that is necessary, but this is mostly just to help with transfer students that are coming in during the summertime.
And we've actually done pretty well, I think, especially alone, where we have over 100 applicants for the positions.
Oh, wow. Over like 160.
I mean, for six or eight positions. So we've, we've actually done well enough.
That's great to know because I was at the CASPA and many other school districts, the biggest, one of their biggest concern is regarding the shortage of their teachers, finding employees through. So it's great to know that I guess our leadership is doing a great job to, you know, having recruiting of the great teachers. Thank you.
And thank you for the support over the summer. It's needed. Okay, if we could take the roll.
Liker.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Patrice.
Aye.
Coil.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
All right, and number 13 is the Facility E waivers. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second. And this is for Gulf Main Park District Wrestling Program, Main East.
Yeah, sure. Main East has a vested interest in affording access to our sender programs to, you know, for the purpose of increasing our own program at that school.
Then this is a new program?
I'm sorry, say that again.
This is a new program?
I think they've partnered in the past.
Yes, I believe we've partnered in the past as well.
I think Gulf Main is a new park district. They'll notice that the contract is contingent. They want some changes to the contract. We're trying to get those changes to evaluate whether they're acceptable in terms of our insurance risk or not.
What type of changes do they want?
That's the part we're trying to get.
So who are you working with?
The Gulf Main, the actual park district itself.
So this is a new thing?
So it is new.
This, it's just new for wrestling.
Wrestling.
This is a new wrestling program.
Yeah, so this is new, so just confirming, new for wrestling, but I believe that there was already partnerships with Gulf Main Park District. One was spoken to earlier. So thank you.
So we're not voting on it yet because?
No, we're voting on it that if you'll notice, we made it contingent upon acceptable review of the contract. So that that, because they want to start using the building immediately. So figuring that if the risk manager is happy with the changes, we would be happy because they're appointed expert in that area.
And just for the record, and I know all board members know this, we actually house in this district the largest unincorporated park in Cook County. So we have a lot of students that don't have easy access to libraries, to district, things like this. So in the East Main area in particular, we have to work sometimes with Glenview and some of the other areas to try to partner. So I would highly, highly recommend that we pursue this obviously with the, with the conditions that Mary outlined there.
Okay, all right, if we could take the roll.
Coil.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Patrice.
Aye.
Liker.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
All right, number 14 is calendar items for information. So please take a second to look over those. All right, so the only item on here that we need to decide on is the April 10 board meeting. So this, this was as that placeholder. So whether or not we need this or not? Yeah. All right, so, so, so just so everybody knows, let's go ahead.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so.
You're surgeon.
So calendar items, not without the April 10, okay? April 10 board meeting. All right, so at this time, we're opening it up for public comment. Did anyone have an additional public comment card?
I don't have any.
All right, with that, let's go ahead. Could I get a motion for us to move into closed session to review closed, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, probable imminent or pending litigation? And that is it. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Can you take the roll?
Collins.
Aye.
Coil. Liker.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Patrice.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
All right, can I get a motion to return to open session?
So move.
Thank you. Can we get the roll?
Collins.
Aye.
Coil.
Aye.
Liker.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Patrice.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Can I get a motion on number 18, Personnel Action?
So move. Second.
Can we take the roll?
Patrice.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Liker.
Aye.
Coil.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Can I get a motion on 19, Staffing?
So move.
Can I take the roll?
Liker.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Coil.
Aye.